We actually have to close our last public hearing on the portal housing law before we open the new one. Remember, we set a brand new public hearing?
We didn't adjourn it?
We continued it till tonight and also set a new one for tonight.
No, you did not set the new one for tonight.
So why do I have to consider?
You have to close the one for tonight and you have to set a public hearing for two weeks for, because there were substantial changes in the law.
Oh, I thought tonight was the public hearing for that.
No, I asked, I asked.
I'm sorry, guy. My mistake.
What is tonight?
Tonight is nothing. Tonight is we just closed the public hearing and we have to set a new one because we made those changes and I mentioned on the phone today.
What changes did we need?
Remember, it simply said you have to be eight, what, eighteen and a village resident to be at, remember the housing board?
Right, right.
That's the only change.
But Will said it was substantive enough, I wasn't getting the right word, I'm sorry. But it was enough that we had to hold a new public hearing. So we had to vote to hold a new public hearing.
We have to set in the public hearing for two weeks, please. Sorry about that. So I've moved to close the public hearing.
We're not in session yet.
Oh, no.
We just, we, I just opened it. What do you want me to do to open the meetings?
I don't know.
Because we've never done anything.
Do we have to do that as an agenda meeting?
Exactly. That's all we need. What's that?
Behave yourself. Do we have to do that if we close it? We have to be in session, don't we, to schedule the new one?
No, because we're, we're still technically in that, that public hearing right now.
Okay.
So we're, we're in the middle of it right now and we're gonna, I move to close it.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll just move to set a new public hearing for, what's the date, Katie?
The eleventh.
February 11th at seven thirty?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
February 11th, Katie?
Yes.
Sorry, guy.
Alright, so Katie, would you please read the notice for the next public hearing?
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Trustees of the Village of New Falls on January 28, 2015 at seven thirty. A public hearing applying general municipal law section three dash C to authorize the override of the tax cap for the single fiscal year 2015-2016. Any person is entitled to inherit on such proposed local law.
Thank you. This is something we do every year for those watching at home here. Uh, it's a, we don't expect to override the tax cap, to go over the tax cap. But if we want to be able to, or if something comes up that we need to be able to, we have to pass a local law in order to do so. So we pass the same local law every year, just in case we need to go over two percent of tax increase in the upcoming budget year. Is there anyone here to speak to that? No? Alright, then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll add adoption of that local law to the agenda. That one we can do tonight.
Yep.
Can we do that as part of consent agenda or not?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Add it to the consent?
Yes.
Alright, would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
If we have to be a resolution to the consent agenda.
Uh, we have some things to add, I believe is what this pile in front of me is for.
Um, I respectfully request that we add an event application dated May 8th for the Huguenot Street Cooperative Nursery.
Any objections to the consent agenda?
Nope.
No.
I respectfully request at the suggestion of the village attorney that we add the resolution, um, to extend the parking ride contract.
Um, any objection to the consent agenda?
Is it, is it a resolution?
It's a resolution, so we can, we'll have to.
Okay.
If it pleases the board, whether or not the board wants to send official condolences to the family of former Fire Chief Butler?
Yes.
Yes.
If the board wants to add the naming, uh, the remembrance of the Gardens for Nutrition, uh, Gardens for Mayor Bet, for, for former Mayor Bet.
That could go on the consent agenda.
Sounds fine.
Let's just, let's put that on the, on the regular one.
Okay.
And the last thing, if it pleases the board, is that the, uh, the village attorney, Will Frank, sent us the whole harmless agreement that was amended the way you requested. He sent it to us today, whether or not you wanna take action on that.
You mean the Boulder School one?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I will point.
What was the, what was the first one?
Uh, the Huguenot Street Nursery. Um, I will point.
Okay, the one after that. It just had a resolution on it.
Oh, it's the Park and Ride.
Park and Ride.
And I will point out that although you received the CDTHP memo in your packet, um, the deputy treasurer gave me an amended version, which is at the table and noted as amended. There's a small piece on it, she said.
Is that the one from Rosen?
Yes.
Like we adapt to the consent agenda.
Well, that is already on the agenda, isn't it?
It is, it's just an amendment to the figure, but I wanted to point it out to you that it was different than what we're up here.
I'd like to take the minutes off the consent agenda because not everybody was at every meeting. Nine, ten is still missing.
Yes, we're having a problem with the funding, we'll get it for you.
I'd like to add to the consent agenda items number 10, 18, and 19. Those are the, the request of, for the cystic fibrosis, the grade request from the town. And the, it's understood, the cystic fibrosis, the clerk is waiting for the insurance for that, so that's.
I'm also waiting for the event, for the, uh, from the church, from the detective medical council too, but I'm certainly.
So you want to move 10, 18, and 19 to the consent agenda?
I want to add 10, 18, and 19 to the consent agenda.
Is there any objections to that? No? Okay, what else? Do you have another one?
I'd like to take item 13 off the agenda altogether because Don Kerr has very kindly offered and is in the process of investigating higher risk problems.
Okay.
Um, and so that's good.
And 20, we want a table?
Um, and item number 20, we want a table, the whole item, because there has been a request adjacent and I meet with the business community. And we will do that and it will go on the February 11th agenda.
Okay.
The other items on the agenda painting are the streets and that, that stays on.
Okay. Anything else to add or change about the agenda?
No, I have, um, edits to some of the draft minutes that I'm going to give to Katie so they can be reflected for the next.
Right.
I have some, um, corrections to.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna do the minutes in the.
Right, yeah, but I just want you all to know.
Yeah, I have some too, Rebecca.
Okay.
Alright. Anything else?
Can you do the agenda?
So, so moved?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, public comment. Would you like to go first?
Mark? Yeah, I'm Mark Sherman, living in the town outside of the village. I know that parking has been tabled as number 20, but I want to talk about it anyway a little bit. I did look at the, uh, agenda with that item, which was essentially 21 different, um, recommendations or items to discuss. The main thing I want to say is that appearance, the appearance is that there was no great evenness for people to know about this prior to this meeting. I just happened to find out about it almost by chance. And I let David Sanders know, saying he was very concerned about these issues. As far as I'm concerned, this is the kind of thing that should be made as public as possible. I think before any discussion takes place, and the discussion should be by the whole board, it should not be by two or one board member, it should be by the entire board. I have been at meetings where there's one board member who's kind of involved, talking to people. This is a village board, it's five people. And I really get the impression that there's a, you know, it would be really wonderful if these things just go through and why do we even have to bother with, with people and their input? That's the way democracy works, it's a pain in the whatever, but that's the way it works. Uh, I'm very discouraged by, by all of this. I, I've been at meetings, I happen to a partner from years, my input has sometimes actually resulted in things. The, there was a fiasco involving the meters downtown where they pay after, was it months? Which shows what happens when things aren't done and they really thought in a manner with as much input as possible. And again, I know you're tabling it, I hope I can make it to the next meeting, February 11th is when it is. I just, it's just very distressing to me. Sorry. Um, anyway, um, I apologize, I hate when I have to. Anyway, um, I just, I don't know what to say. I mean, I, you know, I can't, I can go through these, I understand people. But the implication of this is, let's try to make it as difficult as possible for people who are in New Falls, if they're not residents. And I, I've been here for forty years, working for forty years, and, and, um, I just, I just don't get it. I really don't get it. And I, you know, and I'm just, but my main, my main thing that I'm suggesting, as in, just really, really important. Let people know about this as openly and as early as possible. So that there's never, ever question that people didn't know about something. It should be, you should let the newspapers know, even if it's not a reporter, you should let them know. This should be something that should be as widely distributed as is possible. So people can let each other know and I just, otherwise, you know, it's gonna be problems. And, you know, one thing I've learned in my 72 years is that it's a pain to listen to outside people, it really is. It is so much nicer to be a little group and you know what's best, and I'm not just talking about the sport, I'm talking about people in general, you know, this is what happens. But sometimes an outsider is gonna suggest something to you that is really, really useful. You know, in my teaching career, there was sometimes people in general psychology who knew like nothing, who would ask the best questions. They were people, they were not experts. Sometimes people have great ideas who are outside of you. And I'm just saying, if you want really this to go the best way for, to the entire community, village, and town, and beyond. Because people who come here, thank God, come from not just the village of town in New Falls, but from all over the place. This is a very bizarre place to come and visit. I think, you know, just be as open as possible to people as early as possible. Thanks, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just follow up suggestion. I mean, I've seen you, Jason, at times post different things on Facebook, like, hey, tonight's meeting, we're gonna be discussing this or that. Why not just put the agenda on Facebook?
That's a good idea.
Wait for every single meeting that way, not just the things that you're trying to push at one point or another, but just.
If you can tell me how to do it, I would be delighted to do it.
Jason is gonna do it, he does.
But it is on the village website.
It is.
Right.
And the parking was on.
As far as the work thing, just getting the word out there for things, you know, because it does seem like some things the word gets out and other things it doesn't. So just as far as being consistent, getting the word out for everything would be nice.
Thanks, guys. Anything else? Any other public comment? Nope. Alright. Then moving right along, um, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll move the resolution on the park and ride extension.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
No, it's a rule code.
Alright.
Oh, it is a rule code.
So Wes?
Aye.
Rosler?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Rose?
Yes.
Or Basco is, is out.
Joanna, do you have anything for us tonight? Alright, great.
Yes.
Do you need it?
Hello?
It's a spare copy, I'll take it.
You know what? If you stand here, then people out there would hear you as well.
There you go. Thank you.
You know, my paper's for you.
I don't need much room. Alright, so, I'll wait for Rebecca. On the request of Jason and through the Environmental Policy Commission, I've been looking into some alternative energy options for the village streetlights. There are a couple of options that stand out. I know that there had been some particular interest in solar, uh, street lighting for the village. But I also wanted to look into LED, just to give you those options. Um, so basically, I'm just gonna present to you what I found. We didn't want to go too far in depth with either option because we didn't know which one you guys would want to pursue. But once you guys have made a decision as to which one better suits the village's needs, then you can go forward, you know, looking, you know, at what specifically you want. So either way, whether you go solar streetlights or LED streetlights, you're looking at lowering your environmental impact. I mean, either one is a better option than what you currently have. Conventional streetlights are not the best option that's out there. With LED streetlights, you're looking at spending a few hundred dollars per unit. Again, that's a general, um, a general fine. I didn't go too far into pricing just because we didn't know which one you would want. But you're looking at a few hundred per unit for LED versus a few thousand per unit for solar, and that's on the low end. The lowest I heard was about $3,000 per unit for solar. LED has lower energy consumption, which also means that you have lower operating costs. You're still on grid, so you're still getting those regular utility bills, but they're lowered by about 50 to 80 percent. So you're spending a lot less on your utilities and you're using a lot less. That's the lower energy consumption. One concern that has come up with LED lighting is that there are possible human health risks, and they're still looking into these. It's a fairly new concern that's been raised because LED street lighting is fairly new. Um, but the concern with them is that, uh, because LEDs have increased, they're increasingly bright or increased brightness, there is concern for light pollution, which could have adverse human health risks. Uh, but again, that's like in really early stages and I don't think that there's any conclusive, um, documentation to say that they're dangerous. I know a lot of cities, Cleveland, I mean, a lot of cities are using LED streetlights. On the other hand, you've got solar, which again is a few thousand dollars per unit on the low end, but you're entirely off-grid. You are using what you're generating, um, so it's a low maintenance cost for that reason. It's a non-polluting form of energy because the energy is coming directly from the sun through photovoltaic panels. One thing, it uses rechargeable batteries, um, so you do have to replace the batteries, that's one additional cost with solar streetlights. The other thing that you have to be mindful with is that you need to make sure that the panels on the streetlights are clear. That's particularly important when there's snow out or ice because you need to make sure that the sun is able to reach the panels to generate the energy. As far as solar, that would be, you would obviously be leaving Central Hudson. They would, you would have the equipment delivered, put in, installed, and it would be there, it would be yours. LED is a little different because you've already got the equipment in place, you would be changing the lighting fixtures. Central Hudson does not offer LED lighting.
They will in the spring.
They will? Did they give you a time? Because when I spoke to them, they said that they would.
Late fall, late fall, end of this year, beginning of next.
Right.
And they said that they're only gonna offer about maybe 10 to 20 percent of your lights at a time.
Right, because there's gonna be such a large, uh, demand for them. So that's what they told me to. Basically, that at this time, they don't offer it. They did say that if LED was something that you wanted to pursue and you found an outside company that offered LED lighting, you could request approval through Central Hudson to use this outside company's equipment in your fixtures, because they're Central Hudson fixtures. If you chose to do that though, uh, according to Central Hudson, and I don't know if this is entirely accurate or if they're just trying to, you know, sell their own LEDs, but they're saying that the amount of time it would take to get that approval would almost make it worth just waiting for Central Hudson to have LEDs. So if LED is what you choose to pursue, then you need to decide if you want to go through Central Hudson, when they make it available at the end of 2015. Or if, and like Jason said, uh, basically they're reporting that because of the high demand in all of the communities that will want LED, it's gonna take a while to do a full switch over, um, because they're gonna do it little at a time, a few lights at a time. So again, if you chose LED, you would have to choose if you wanted to do it through Central Hudson or if you wanted to find an outside, uh, provider and then get the permission or get the, uh, get consent from Central Hudson to use those lights. And then solar, obviously, you wouldn't need that consent, that would be on your own.
How much does Central Hudson charge for pole?
They don't have a, they didn't, at least when I spoke to them, have a quote for their LED lights because they don't have them.
If we use solar.
It would be through Central Hudson.
But you would use their poles and they own the poles.
What they told me is that you wouldn't use their poles, what they told me is that you would have, that they own the poles, that they would be taking them back if you left them. And that when you purchase the units through a solar company, it would be a whole new fixture. And I know that you guys have talked about this.
With the foundation.
With the, I mean, it would be everything.
Whole new pole and light, light, all in one unit.
And then Central Hudson would come and remove theirs?
I think that they would charge you for the removal.
I think they would too.
Because you would be leaving their service. So, I mean, that's something additional to consider. And, uh, Don had asked me if I had a recommendation between the two for the board, and I really can't make one because it's based on what you guys feel. Would you rather spend the additional money to eventually, to be totally off-grid and independent of Central Hudson and independent of, you know, the utility bills? And would you rather that, or would you rather spend a little less, reduce your utility bills by 50 to 80 percent, but still be dependent on Central Hudson, still be depend, you know, still be on grid?
I don't want to speak for anyone else, but for me, the, it seems pretty clear that the plan forward would be to simply just wait for Central Hudson to do the LED streetlights and setups, because they're also gonna do it at their own expense.
Right.
Swap out the LED, kill the LED. But in the meantime, so we've got a, a year before that even starts. In the meantime, keep looking into the solar option to see if we can come up with a budget to give us some kind of sense of how much this would cost. I mean, if it's, so I know we have just under, we have about 275 streetlights. We probably need another 25 more, just to be conservative and to give us nice round numbers. So 300 lights, if we were to swap them all out, at $3,000 apiece would be $900,000. Now, at our interest rates now, we can borrow about $300,000 over five years. Five years, we, sorry, for what we're paying Central Hudson right now, we could get $300,000 on a five-year borrowing and have it break even. So we could, we have some, some money to play with. You know, if we, if we borrow in the, uh, say we borrow a million dollars to do solar streetlights, and this is just completely.
Blue sky.
Blue sky, yeah. Say we had a million dollars to, to allocate.
I think the treasurer would tar and feather you.
Yeah, well, but, you know, if, if we're swapping out debt service for utility bills, you know, it may not make much of a difference. But we don't know because we don't know what the real budget is, and we might want to do a phased thing. Like replace all the downtown streetlights first, you know, before we go to the surrounding suburb, you know, side streets.
Might I make a suggestion? We have a $2,500 grant for solar that we are sitting on. And would it be worth our figuring out a place to put one solar light to experiment and see how it works?
My suggestion for, for that would be the parking lot down on the way to the, to the, um, gardens, yeah, by.
But that's on our list to.
Right, but I think that would make sense to do, to start the solar projects.
Try one there as an experiment.
Yeah.
When we, we drive down with some frequency now to Moorestown, New Jersey, and we note every time that there are new solar panel lighting throughout this area. And I would be interested if there's a way, and perhaps I would work with Joanna to find out, what, what did it cost Moorestown? Uh, which is, you know, just a, a little burg in, uh.
New Jersey.
In New Jersey. What did it cost them to, uh, implement this? Because they had to have a plan, a design, they had to know where to put them, and then they did. So there, they are. Can we find out? Would they be kind enough because, uh, like a fellow board member would request some information?
Yeah.
So could, can you and I discuss how we can work together just to check Moorestown, New Jersey?
But I'd like to go along with.
That's fine.
I'd like to say what Rebecca, where Rebecca is suggesting.
Yeah, and if we have the grant money.
We have a grant.
Right.
Bren got us a grant.
Yes.
So even if your figure is on the high side, $2,500 would cover.
That, the figure that I have is on the low side.
On the.
The 3,000?
3,000?
Was the lowest that I had heard anybody say.
Could we investigate what it would cost to do one solar light in the gardens? And that's a good place because it gets good light.
Yeah, I think we should also look at, at the, um, the grant that Bren got to see what would be feasible.
What is it for?
Right.
Yes, but both, do both. And to figure out before we put the budget to bed, how much.
Yes.
We more we need to augment the $2,500 grant we have and put one up at the gardens, that would be a good place to, to test the weathering that you're talking about, and ice and all that. And would give us a good understanding of how.
Yeah.
It would work.
I would, I would be in favor of that.
Are you willing to do another round of work on solar?
Absolutely, yeah. So for right now, you want to table LEDs because they're not gonna be available till the end of the year anyway, and do more research into solar?
Yes, freestanding solar.
But we also would like to do one solar light.
So maybe find a sample of something that looks historic, that's also solar, like the Sesame Street side, like they have in Gardiner, you know, Sesame Street lights.
I'm not quite sure I'm ready for that one, but.
I think if we're gonna put things in a historic district, we might as well look into it.
You don't need to put out an RFP or anything like that?
Yeah, we need the grant.
Not to look, we could just buy one, we could probably buy one to help.
Okay, so you want me to look into, to find you a solar paneled freestanding streetlight?
Yep.
Sure.
Or give it, find us a couple samples of the ones that you guys like. Because I, I know from having looked into this, how many different varieties there are.
Yes. Another thing with that.
You want to get in on that, Rebecca?
Sure, yes. Another thing with that location, um, it isn't exactly, it, it isn't a street. There is property there, so I think there would be more flexibility into what type of panel we could actually use. Because you're not gonna be walking down the street and, you know, right next to the, the panels necessarily. Alright, so I'm going to research that, what's available, so we can find one to try it out. And then I'm gonna work with Tom.
And you want to check with Bren to see if there are any stipulations or qualifications?
Alright, so Rebecca, you're gonna talk to Bren?
Yeah, she's gonna talk with Bren.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you guys. Tom will email you about that?
Yeah, sure. Or I'll email you because I might just get on the phone and call Moorestown and say, hi, what do you?
But they, they're, it may be Moorestown also has LED lighting, so you could ask them about that.
Well, it's solar, they have most solar panels, LED lights in the solar fixture, um, so they have.
I'll wait.
Alright.
Thank you so much, Karen.
Oh, by the way, I did find, Joanna, I did find one online that had, the light pole was like 11 feet. And also, you might want to look at the, the village has lighting standards.
Oh.
And you'll go to Bren and get those for you. But I think it's 11 feet tall with a bench, a park bench attached on one side and a bike rack attached on the other, and it had Wi-Fi.
I'm sure that's definitely the $2,500.
It could be, yeah, that's definitely the cheapest one.
Any tables down there?
Um, there's regular electricity poles.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are.
So we would, Joanna, we would, down for the experimental, we don't need a pole, I don't, unless the package comes with that.
The package comes with it, yeah.
Okay, so it's a whole connected thing?
It's usually, because it's, um, not connected, it's not in the ground. Right, and that's also, being that there aren't already streetlights there, we wouldn't have to worry about paying Central Hudson to remove anything.
Exactly.
If there's anything there. Alright, thank you, Karen.
Okay, thanks, Joanna. Alright, next up is an oldie, but I brought it back because I finally got a rewrite from Will. We looked at this last night, last November, December, I guess.
Yes.
And we sent it back to Will to, to look at, and so this is Will's latest version. I think really adding the district regulations section is.
What I was, had asked at, at the last meeting, and I thought we agreed. The planning board is working very hard with Bren to come up with the design, design standards.
Right, and, and that, and, and I thought about that, and it doesn't meet, this isn't a design standards law because it's the uses that I'm also concerned about. Not just the, the facades and the, and whatever. So all I'm asking tonight is, is if there's a majority, is, would be to refer it to the county planning board for their input, while I talk to business owners.
Not unless you, for me, not unless you include gas stations.
Include them, not exempt them.
They cannot be exempted.
Why is that?
Because they're, they're the biggest chain we have.
And we have lots of them.
No, but, and we have lots of gas stations, so I really.
What do the rest of you think about that?
Think they have to go.
That would be section two, the very last, number three. What do you, or what do you think about the thought there?
Well, as you know, I'm, I'm in favor of the idea, but I'm concerned about. Well, as you know, I'm, I'm in favor of the idea, but I'm concerned about forcing businesses out of loopholes.
This wouldn't apply to the district businesses.
It would not apply to any existing...
They'd be grandfathered.
Everything would be grandfathered. So, just no new chains, no new chains.
No new banks?
They would be a chain or, yeah, unless they're local and don't have a lot of branches.
Well, and what about doctors who all now belong to...
It, well, this is, this is specifically retail. It's retail sales. So, doctors off professional offices wouldn't be exempt.
What, is a bank a retail?
I think so, I believe so.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
And drugstores?
Drugstores would be retail. So, Dedrick's, yes, CBS, no.
And what about Verizon?
Verizon would be a chain. But I guess a Verizon store couldn't open, but a Verizon office could. Like if they wanted to move their corporate headquarters here, that would be, you know, fine under this law.
But I feel very strongly about gas stations being included.
What do you, what do you think?
Given that we have the grandfather issue covered, I think that's fine.
You agree, the gas stations should be?
All right. Well, I mean, we don't even know what the planning board, uh, county, or county planning board are going to say about this, so...
So, what we do now is refer to county planning board. They send it back with their opinion to us.
I want it referred to our planning board.
Yeah, I want to refer it to both. So, we can take their comments into account in our discussion. And then not have this on the agenda again until we get those comments back. And then discuss the whole, their comments.
And we see the what design standards they're going to put up with, but that may solve the problem.
It's likely that it would be barred by the county planning board until March, because today is so late into the January.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
My concern, as I voiced it before, was that we have a number of entities now in the village. Uh, and although they would be exempted in grandfathered in, we would then not be able to have a business such as STS, which is on thirty-two North. And it looks like it belongs here just nicely, thank you very much. I don't see any reason why we, as a village, would not want to have a service or retail service like STS, which looks perfectly fine here. Uh, I, I, again, you could make the same argument, I suppose, for Stewart's, if Stewart's didn't look like Stewart's, uh, which it does look like Stewart's. But STS doesn't look like any. It looks like the, the business that was there before.
Right.
Which was a local business. You can't tell the difference between that business and the business that was there before.
And I guess...
I'm not saying they're...
No, I understand, but that's one of the problems with details.
That's also why we have ZDA.
I don't think, I mean, I think this board should make decisions that are in the best interest of the community and not jump it over to the ZDA.
I'm, my, I don't mean it that way.
Oh, okay. I thought you were looking for an out.
No.
But we do have a, the ZDA is, is written into the laws, having discretion to exempt.
Right.
Like any other, like any other variance of the legal.
But there, I do have a concern about drugstores, because Dedrick's is locally owned. But, yeah, they, they're going to retire one of these days, or... And I would not want not to have a drugstore in the village. I think that's very important. And there aren't too many independently-owned drugstores. The other concern I have are franchises which are locally owned. And I don't want to deprive businesses, future businesses, say, opening a hardware store, but it's locally owned, like True Value is locally owned. I think we're going to have to figure out how not to...
I think it's fair for us to make exceptions to the law.
Well, then I think we ought to make them in the law. So, if it's locally owned, it doesn't count. But I also think it's really, I mean, I want to give a plug to the planning board. Bren and the planning board are really working very hard to conceptually think about design standards, what that means, and, and what they're going to recommend to us. And I think, I like your idea of sending this to the county and sending it to our planning board with the understanding that we will await their recommendation on design standards and address the two together.
Well, we don't necessarily address the two together, but yes. I would read the first part, but not necessarily the second.
You know, if you have a locally-owned franchise for, say, what, a Friendly? What, what do you think, because that's a chain that I...
Yeah.
Design standards for the village, if, if what I'm hoping they're coming up with says it doesn't look like a Friendly's, it has to fit in with the environment.
And that's, and that's what many, many communities have done that as well. I believe, I believe it's sandwich Massachusetts.
Oh, and, and a lot of Long Island, yeah, then, yeah, you know. So, I would like to have a chance and an opportunity to see what they recommend and then look at it in light of this.
Sure.
Okay.
So, we, we could, we could carefully craft...
Yes.
A component of a statute that would exempt locally-owned franchise businesses that adhere to all New Falls established design standards. And maybe we could even carry it in and meet the approval, or get the approval of the ZDA.
Right.
We only, we only need the ZDA.
I understand, but there, there are a number of options that we have to craft the law.
Right.
That would be able to take account of the kinds of...
But we're not going to do, try and do that tonight.
Not tonight.
Oh, okay.
We're going to send this first to our own planning board and the county.
But we are going to, before we send it, include gas stations.
Okay.
Next, include.
Include, that they have to meet these standards.
Yep. So, do you agree on that?
I was going to make a motion to send, send it to the village planning board as well as the county planning board.
I'll second that. And I, and I have the con, oh, sorry, you have the con.
You have the amendment in, so I don't need to amend.
Katie, do you have the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. And you have a word? I'll talk tomorrow about it.
And we're going to look at this whole thing together. It's not independent of...
Yeah, and just to make a, to refresh people's memories too, that, that this is about, I guess it's about two things. One is about the, the impacts of the use, and the other is the impact of the aesthetics. And the design standards will do with the aesthetics. You know, like many people would be perfectly happy to allow McDonald's downtown as long as it looks like McDonald's or serves McDonald's food.
And if it's locally owned, it would be protected.
But there's another whole facet to this, which design standards don't address, and that's the impact of chains on local economies. And, and in the findings, you'll see, in the footnotes, if, I mean, I think, these are a little bit old, and I have more recent ones, but what has consistently been seen across the country is that if you take two, um, a locally-owned business and a chain business that provide roughly the same goods or services, the local business recirculates forty-five cents out of every dollar back into the local economy, um, and the chain store recirculates only fifteen percent, or fifteen cents. So, you've got three times as much money recirculating in the local economy with a locally-owned business as you do with a chain. Uh, so, there's, there's local economy, local effects in the local economy can also play a part in this conversation, too.
But, but let us also know that, given our building codes, square footage require square footage allowed and limited to, most chain stores would not come into those...
Not the big box ones, right.
Because they're not allowed to buy square footage, so...
Not the, the big box ones, certainly, yeah.
Even the little box ones wouldn't make it.
So, do we have...
So, we, uh, we haven't voted yet, is there any more discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Mountain Laurel.
I'll move we approve the proposed contract?
Um, Jason, has...
I'll second.
Has this been shared with them?
Not yet, I want the board, the board approval, and then we're going to send it to them.
I would rather have them feel that they have opportunity to discuss and maybe make a suggestion that you'll...
Well, they still, they still can, we'll, we'll communicate that. But it should come from the board rather than just me.
I will amend it to say that I will approve a proposed contract, subject to negotiations.
Um, that's fair enough, Ruth, you made a motion, did I?
You did, and then Tom said it.
So, so amended my motion. Is that all right with you?
It's okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, eight, we should table, because my, um, ride with Joe was supposed to happen Tuesday, so we had to reschedule.
Okay, but, but what I wanted to point out before we do that is Blue went and checked Church Street. I had not had an opportunity to go down on Church Street. Rebecca, have you, because I sent you an email asking you, were you going down that way? Is it better lighting? Blue, Blue says Church Street.
Uh-huh.
He went down and he checked, and he thought it was, the lighting was fine.
The, between Main and North Front? It's fine, I'm, it's not like, it's not exactly...
They fixed a bulb or two.
Yeah, yeah, that, that area, yes, but further down, no. It, the area near the library.
You mean when you go on the other side of North Front on Church Street?
Yes, yes.
Well, that wasn't what I was asking about, so if you...
Okay, so I'll need to add that.
I have that as well, I have, I have it tomorrow.
That, I think, is on Jason's list, that he was, so I think we're okay on...
I just wanted to note that we have walked down that, uh, street very deliberately, and it is dark in places on that street.
Okay, but Jason's got a whole...
So, it's not, not good, it's bad.
He's got a whole list, he's looking at all of the lights.
I got ten places to look at.
But Katie made a mistake, and if you see the, the items that I requested, it wasn't just Church Street, it was for the gardens. And I would like us, aside from the solar, to, in fact, have Central Hudson install lights at the gardens. We talked about it, we think it is a good idea. I don't know how many we need.
Uh, that's what me and Joe are going to do. We're going to drive around, we're going to mark down the pole numbers and the low and the high water.
The gardens have no lights right now, except the solar.
But there might be poles for power that we can put on.
So, I'm, I'm perfectly happy to take this off the agenda as long as it is promised that that will be on the list...
It is.
That you're doing.
It is.
Yes, Rebecca, is that good?
Yes.
All right.
All right, so number nine...
And when do you think we'll have that list?
Um, well, we're going to, no, no, early, well, for our February meeting, I hope so. I'm going to drive around with Joe on Monday at the dark.
Streetlight recommendations on the agenda for the first meeting. Good.
Um, nine, we should discuss an executive session.
Okay.
Yes.
Eleven.
Okay, this is the whole thread that was going through. There is a request to, from TIC to us, and DOT is agreed that at, on North Front Street at the intersection of North Front and Chestnut, that the lines be repainted and the left lane clearly indicating a left-hand turn, and the right lane for straight ahead and turning right. We also have the same problem at North Chestnut, where it intersects with Main, because when we remove those three meters, DOT, we requested that they lengthen the stacking lane. So, and it's not, and they're also going to need to paint black where the three meters were, so people stop parking there because they don't understand, they can't. And so, those two things, but Blue says that the board has to request this for the mayor to write the letter on behalf of the board. And so, the letter needs to come from the village board to DOT asking for that street demarcation.
Okay.
And I will move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, number twelve is mine. Several months ago, the, the town unilaterally dissolved their involvement in a joint public access advisory committee?
Do we know that they did that?
We do.
Yes, they did.
They did that.
That they...
They don't want, they were going to start a new one, and they just never did, um, on their own. So, as far as I'm concerned, we still have appointees to this, including the chairman.
We only have one.
Is it, do you mean one, Don's the only one?
Don and I talked about this. Don says he is the village rep and Randall leveret with the town, that's it.
Wasn't, um, Andrea Russo, Andrea Russo?
She resigned, I think.
She did.
Yeah. This was just a recent conversation I had with Don about this. If you remember, Jason, Don said there was, after the whole Time Warner contract was done, and they did a super job hammering that out, Don, Don said, you know, we don't have anything to do, so we'll go on sabbatical, so to speak, until we're needed. That did not mean we disbanded anything.
Right, and that's, that's my point, is that we...
This is, this gets complicated, and I would ask that the clerk might research for us the intermunicipal agreement between the town and the village on the public access. And the contract that we endorsed with Time Warner is actually a contract between the town and Time Warner. So, I think we need to have more information than we have right now. And I'm not sure if you have an intermunicipal agreement, one side can just dispute.
I'm not sure there is an IMA for the, I'm not sure there is an IMA for that. It could have just been a motion made by both boards.
I think we...
But, but what do we want to do? We need, do we need the...
I don't, we can have a public access committee.
Can we just have a village one?
Well, I don't, that's what I want the clerk to research, because if we have a, a joint contract with Time Warner, we can't be separate and apart. And I think a while ago, this whole thing came up, and I thought somebody said we had an intermunicipal agreement, because that's how we budget for the videographer. It's a joint venture.
All right, so let's table this discussion until we find out.
Yeah, so Katie, would you research that?
I, I just want to be clear that I, I don't think we should have a committee unless the committee has a very particular function. If the committee has a function established by an IMA, then I would be surprised that the IMA could be unilaterally, uh, abrogated, especially if it was formed by our attorney. We had attorneys grant an intermunicipal agreement.
This one came before.
It's not, it's not this guy, it's what's this board. An intermunicipal agreement, uh, to provide services together. So, yeah, let's find out.
Yeah, that would do.
There must be an IMA on file somewhere.
I would think so.
Do you research?
Now down to fourteen.
Um, yes, we do that.
What's that?
We could do two things with that. One, I will move to dismiss the parking fine for the young man that was dead, who's a veteran.
Uh, I'll second that. Is there a second?
You seconded.
You seconded.
I'm sorry, there are two things at once. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have a recommendation from Nancy to allow parking for veterans in our long-term parking spot at half-price. I would like to support that recommendation, but I would make it for free for veterans.
Okay.
If we have veterans in this community who need parking, I think it is a very small thing for us to grant, that we recognize what they've done for us, and I would like to, if they come with proper identification and whatever the parking department requires, that we just give them a hundred percent rate off.
Um, I don't disagree. What, what I would like to see us do is to, um, roll this into the bigger parking discussion, you know, basically as, as Mark requested, for us to make it more public.
Well, that is a different issue. And Rebecca, I don't want to take exception, but we've had a number of parking meetings, okay? And there are some things that... Okay? And there are some things that we all are gonna just have. If you noticed on the top, it said, nobody was committing to anything tonight. You were just giving Jason and I a go-ahead on the items that we thought were worthy of pursuit. So I take exception and I know that the clerk had it on the website. Okay? So to say that people weren't aware of it, if they went to the website, they certainly were. So I want to make sure that Katie, it's understood Katie did what she was asked to do. Um, but I don't think in this particular, I don't think that is a parking issued at all. All we're saying for what Nancy's recommending and I'm amending is that instead of half price... Hmm?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
So, Tom, any thoughts on half price or something?
The only, the only thoughts I have is, uh, we had a recommendation from our treasurer. Do we know how much this is gonna cost?
It's going to cost us...
Nothing, something.
Nothing.
Nothing.
We have free parking spaces at the moment?
I third.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, I'll move the retainer agreement for Blue Steen Shapiro over to Barone.
Second.
I'm gonna amend.
Okay.
Um, I would like to recommend, and I have, I sent an email to Will for his advice and counsel. I would like to move a twelve-month stipend for our village attorney at fifty thousand dollars for twelve months for two hundred and fifty hours instead of ten months because it's better for our budgeting.
Mm-hmm.
And that the, the other terms and conditions, if we exceed the retainer hours, it's at a hundred and ninety-five dollars an hour. And that litigation is settled, just as he stated. And Will is very happy with that proposal and he thinks twelve months is better.
So we go from twelve, to twelve months from ten months.
Yep.
Yes.
And you go from two hundred hours to two fifty.
At two fifty, two hundred and fifty hours.
Yep. For a retainer of fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's fine.
You okay with the amendment? Okay.
All in, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number sixteen, Sally, you requested this?
Um, ma, 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 oh, yes. Um, now that we have the housing standards law passed, I think it's very important that the entire community know the terms and conditions that if you are owner occupied, you have to be inspected. I would like to suggest that we direct the building department to compose and send to all property owners. Jason, do you want it under your signature so you can review it?
Sure.
Um, for, to prepare the letter to be signed by the mayor informing people in very simple English the new law, what is required, et cetera.
So this would not be for all village property, but for all rental property?
It is for all property owners in the village of New Falls because we do not know all owner occupied rentals.
Owner occupied rentals.
Yeah, there, if you and Ellen rented two rooms, the village does not...
Which we could and which has been done in our house in the past.
But that's not my point. You do not know that you are now required to proceed differently. So all property owners need to perceive this.
All right.
That's fine.
Do we have a, was anything actually moved?
We don't have a second yet. I moved it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Katie, it is for the, the mayor's review and signature.
I did make note of that.
Thank you.
And we should probably first discuss seventeen in executive session. Do we need to? Uh, I'm asking, do we need to or should?
Um... I don't need to.
I don't, no, I don't think so.
I'll move to create, to create the position of building inspector to...
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, well, twenty-one, I have parking right, but we did that already. Did that do something?
Um, you want to do the tax override.
Yep.
Oh, that's, must be what it was. So I'll move we adopt a local law. Any question?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will move to not only inform Jamie Willenbrock, who is president of the gardens, that the gardens for nutrition in nineteen eighty-three was commemorated in the honor of John Vett. And I would ask that the board approve a sign wherever out front, you know, you go down, indicating that it is the John Vett Gardens for Nutrition.
It's actually, I believe, one, one correction, uh, the John Vett Memorial Garden.
Okay, whatever.
What it, Memorial Gardens is what it's called.
Yep.
So we're just confirming that it is actually called the John Vett Memorial Gardens.
The village will, in fact, create a sign, so noted.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I add one little thing, just an idea at the present time? It's also about parking. I noted, uh, as I came to Village Hall several times, that a small truck had been parked, uh, in front of the building for several days. It was covered in snow and it had been obviously there for a number of days. I asked Mr. Gucci about that. He said, well, there is no sign except for the sign for mayor's parking and the handicapped parking space. There is no other sign indicating that this is for village business or any other purpose. And while he feels that he can, after twenty-four hours, if he notes the car's been there that long, he can, uh, ticket them, but he's quite concerned that there be some indication of a parking restriction in that area.
So you want to make a motion to make a sign?
I, I was only bringing it up, but I'd be happy to, to do that at this time.
I'll second because at Katie's entrance, there is a sign that says, Village Business Owner.
It's clear that, that the signage is okay in the back.
You want to do the same thing in front?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move that we approve the tax override law.
We already know.
We did that.
You did that.
Question answer with a...
All right, what else can we...
The fire chief.
We need to go into...
Fire chief, minutes in executive session.
We'll do minutes first?
Well, I wanted the fire chief, Chief Butler first.
That the clerk instructed to communicate in writing to the family of Dave Butler, the village board's sorrow and condolences under the name of Dave Butler.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
No.
And if the clerk will CC the fire department that we have so done because he was the fire chief for, I don't know how long, Rebecca might know, but I...
Nineteen eighty-three to nineteen eighty-nine.
Hmm?
Nineteen eighty-three to nineteen eighty-nine. And the flags are flying at half staff in his memory from now until Saturday.
And I, I don't know whether this is appropriate, but I think we should fly our flag, village flag at half.
And we already are.
But for how long?
From now until Saturday, then the burial takes place.
Good.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't, do you know?
I don't, but I know.
Okay.
Um, all right, what, what about the minutes? Do we have to do with?
Okay, before we...
Yeah, let me...
Birmingham. We cannot, we cannot approve the minutes from eight-twenty-seven because that would require the mayor, the deputy mayor and trustee Basco.
And you need to put at the top.
I just caught that. I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Um, and we need to table the minutes from ten to what, ten fifteen because that included the town. That was, that was the meaning for the comprehensive. If you'd like to pass them and move to the...
Just do them set by set. Since Ariana isn't here and Tom and I weren't...
We can't do that at all.
Um, well, you can. I mean, if I have no objections to what you did, I can accept the minutes.
But that's if they will afford it.
What do you want me to do?
Wait, this is the one that...
No, you twenty-seven.
These are eight-twenty-seven.
I think I gave them...
Tom and I were absent.
Well, we've always waited until there was a...
Nine-twenty-six.
Quarter there.
I think it's cleaner if, yeah, more of them.
Okay, these have to go till February eleventh then. And by that time you'll find nine-ten.
Yeah.
We're just having a problem bringing up the data from the electricity went out in the middle of them and we're, we're, it's there, it's just having trouble coming out. We will get it though.
We have enough to vote on nine-twenty-six.
And what about ten-twenty-two and December thirtieth? Yes?
Um, December thirtieth needs to be redone. Resolutions are lacking on the front page. And that's...
So can we do, uh, nine-twenty-six and ten-twenty-two?
No, I think so, but yeah, please. We can do ten-fifteen.
No, we can't. The town needs, the town, the town was there. There was a joint meeting.
Well, three of us were at that meeting on...
But we, we should approve it with the town board president, approve the minutes of the town meeting with the town.
Okay, um, I'm getting myself together here now. All right, ten...
Ten-twenty, uh, nine-twenty-six, ten-twenty-two.
That's what we're looking at.
Uh, ten-thirty, Katie, the resolution is not...
This, this is literally copied from Will Frank, Will Frank's format. I, I'll happily change it, but this is how Will Frank...
You need to show the resolution.
I do, it's on the, very next page.
Yeah. Is that the resolution here?
Yes, ma'am.
Then just move it, vote the other way, under it.
I can absolutely do that. I literally lifted it from Will Frank's setup, so that's why it's...
The resolution comes first, then the roll call.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay, so with that amendment and that, um, we could do twelve-thirty. And which, nine-twenty-six, we can do, Jason?
Yep, and what about October twenty-second?
And ten-twenty-two?
I'll move...
Or no, we wanted to wait on ten-twenty-two.
No, we want to wait on ten-fifteen.
Ten-fifteen.
Ten-fifteen is the one we're voting for.
Yeah.
Okay.
October twenty-second, we're good on.
I'll second.
Are we doing, are we doing the ones that Ariana, no, was that?
If we have a...
Just, just...
Okay, got you.
Twelve-thirty, we can do, do Rebecca because you, Jason and I were here. The others, we, we all were here.
So we're looking at...
We're looking at three sets of minutes to...
Right, yes, sir.
I move that way too.
I did.
You, she, I second.
Thank you.
All right, so in favor, all in favor?
Aye.
That should not have been that difficult.
Anything else?
We need to, I move we go into executive session to discuss personnel matters and, uh, matters about contract negotiations?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.